Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Revere. For those of you who do not know, my name is Brian Arigo. I am the mayor of this wonderful city. And it is truly an honor and a pleasure to welcome Senator Warren on her trail through the Commonwealth and at tonight's town hall. It is an honor for the city to host this this evening. And there are so many exciting things that are happening in the City of Revere that I'm incredibly proud of, and there are so many things to be proud of about Revere. Between a couple of weeks ago, the fact that we hosted nearly a million people at the sandsculpting event, International Sandsculpting Festival.[48.48][48.48](APPLAUSE). And the city and the beach has been a destination for a long time, and it's been a destination for that one week weekend through the year. And part of my vision for the city is to make sure that the beach is a destination throughout the entire year.[71.11][71.11](APPLAUSE). And what we've seen in the short time that I've been in office, about 18 months, we've seen a true economic transformation happening right before my eyes. And not just down the beach, where we have two new hotels that are going to be built pretty quickly, that will include restaurants and cafes and amenity space for visitors and residents alike. But we have an incredible opportunity with the Suffolk Downs site, which is ripe for a mixed-use transit-oriented development. We have an opportunity with the Neco property, which is just across the street and will be the future home of robotics, biotech, and advanced manufacturing. So there are a lot of exciting things happening in Revere. And the fact is, we have great partners at the federal level that have made, you know, my job of creating a 21st century economy in a city like Revere much easier. And for so long, Massachusetts has been a leader, and now Revere gets their seat at the table, which I'm very excited about.[155.88][155.88](APPLAUSE). And it's especially appropriate, the fact that we're in this school this evening. Revere High School has been recognized nationally as a school that has made significant progress in closing the achievement gap. And that is a testament to the fact that we have such a great superintendent of schools, Dr. Diane Kelly. We have an incredible school committee. We have great teachers and administrators. And their hard work has really made our school system one that can be, we can be very proud And I've mentioned a couple of things that I'm very proud of in this city, but one of the most important during these difficult times, I think, is the fact that we have been a community that has thrived for years because of immigrants.[228.48][228.48](APPLAUSE). And we are a community that is truly greater for the presence of our immigrants. And we, as a city, have to be a resource for all of our residents and for everyone that comes through this community. And I can't think of any better person who has been a champion for all of these values that I speak of tonight: education, creating a 21st century economy, and protecting all of our residents than Senator Warren. So Senator Warren, thank you for all that you've done.[277.08][277.08](APPLAUSE). She has truly been a champion for those values and is committed to those values. And someone else who is very committed to those values is somebody who is no stranger to the City of Revere and actually is very, very understanding of the challenges that happen on the local level, because she got her start at the Melrose School Committee. And is somebody that has stood shoulder to shoulder with mayors throughout the Commonwealth to make sure that we are fighting gun violence and that we are doing everything that we can to make our communities safe. Our next speaker, Representative Katherine Clark.[321.62][321.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[330.12][330.12](APPLAUSE). Oh, you are all a beautiful sight. It is so nice to be here. It is so good to be with you. Thank you to the mayor. And I couldn't be more delighted to see all of you on a Friday night in August, because we get to welcome home our senior senator, Elizabeth Warren.[356.12][356.12](APPLAUSE). Let me just say, Elizabeth Warren, you know her, and you know exactly whose side she's on in every single fight. She's on yours, and she's on mine. And that is something that is all too rare on Capitol Hill. She's crystal clear, and we can be absolutely confident that we know that she's going to lean in, that she's going to speak the truth, and that she will go to the mat for all of us and for the families of the Commonwealth, the families of Revere, the families of the 5th Congressional District, and the families across our country. And she just is such a voice, and we can be so proud of the work that she does and the iconic status that she has developed around the country because of her clarity, because of her passion for doing the right thing, to make sure she's standing up for all those voices that get drowned out by special interests in Washington. And I want to thank you personally, before I get to bring Elizabeth Warren onstage, for your work, for the calls you made, for the meetings you had, for the protests and the rallies you went to. When those no votes early last Thursday morning were recorded in the Senate, with each no vote, I could hear your voice speaking with them, because you made it happen. You protected health care for millions and millions and millions of Americans.[471.31][471.31](APPLAUSE). And that was you. But they are not, we cannot rest on our laurels too long, and we are going to do exactly what Elizabeth Warren did. When they tried to shut her down, she persisted. And that is what we're going to do.[495.81][495.81](APPLAUSE). And we're going to persist, and we're going to resist, and we couldn't have a better partner in the Senate or in government or in the country to do that with than our senior senator, Elizabeth Warren.[511.21][511.21](APPLAUSE). Ah, thank you. Hello. It's good to see you. Thank you. Hello. Hello, Revere. So much love. It's good to see you. Thank you. Let me start by saying a very special thank you to Mayor Arigo for his warm introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're doing a great job.[524.21][524.21](APPLAUSE). I'm just trying to figure out what the sound is doing here. And I also want to say, what a great partner I have in Katherine Clark, and I'm grateful to you for sending her to the United States Congress. She is fabulous. She is terrific. She's terrific. So here we are, as Katherine said, it is a Friday night, a beautiful summer day out there, and all of you chose to be inside to talk about policy and to talk about the future of America. I love being the senator from Massachusetts.[565.41][565.41](APPLAUSE). Yes, thank you. Thank you. So I thought what we do tonight is I'll just talk for a few minutes, and then I'm going to turn it over to you, and we're going to answer, I'll just do as many questions as I can. And then after we've done some questions, I'll stay here for as long as anybody wants, and we'll just come around if anybody wants to just shake hands or do a picture or tell me something. We can all do that afterwards, so we'll get that done. Okay? Good. We'll have some fun.[601.54][601.54](APPLAUSE). Because this has been my first chance to be back with a big group in Massachusetts since the vote last Friday. And I just want to start with the deepest and most heartfelt thank you to all of you. It is you and people like you all across Massachusetts and all across this country who saved health care for tens of millions of Americans. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you've done.[642.41][642.41](APPLAUSE). For any of you, can I just ask for any of you, anybody in here send an email about health care? Or make a phone call? You just keep your hands up. Or tweet about it, Facebook post, anybody, right? Reach out. There's a lot of folks in here. And the reason I ask that is because I really want you to understand, the world has changed, and it changed because of what people did. You know, try to remember where we were. The Republicans in the House had voted 60-plus times to repeal the Affordable Care Act, just repeal it outright. In the Senate, the Republicans had voted to repeal it outright. President Obama had had to veto to save the Affordable Care Act. And Donald Trump had said multiple times during his campaign, on day one, he would repeal the Affordable Care Act. We didn't have the votes to stop that in the House or in the Senate. And yet, day one came and went, and day 10 came and went, and day 100 came and went. And here we are at a time when, as a country, we have said to the Republicans in Congress and to Donald Trump, we do not support taking away health care from millions of Americans. That's what we've said.[741.63][741.63](APPLAUSE). Yeah. We've said we don't support taking health care away from millions of Americans. We don't support raising insurance rates for millions more Americans. Yeah.[758.51][758.51](APPLAUSE). And we sure as heck don't support giving a bunch of tax breaks to millionaires and billionaires and insurance companies on the backs of people losing their health care coverage.[774.23][774.23](APPLAUSE). But as I said, we didn't have the votes to stop that. There were not enough Democratic votes to stop it in the House or in the Senate. What changed? What changed is that people spoke up. People said, wait a minute, this is not okay with me. People tweeted. People posted. People made phone calls. People sent emails. People told stories. People talked to each other. People put a face on what health care means in America. And when we did that, we said, the voices of people across Massachusetts and across this country will be heard in Washington. And a week ago today, they were heard in Washington. That's how we win.[828.81][828.81](APPLAUSE). And I just want to remind everybody in this room, let's do it one more time. Anybody in this room know someone who's in a nursing home? Yeah. Anybody in this room know someone, a special needs child, who needs special therapy, special care, maybe special breathing tubes? Anyone in this room know someone who may be housebound or have a disability and need a little extra help to be able to live independently? Yeah, that's what health care in America is all about. Making sure that all of us, all of us pitch in a little, so that if that happens to us, that happens to someone in our family, that happens to someone that we know, then we're going to promise, there's going to be a basic level of care for every single American. Health care is a basic human right in this country. Yes.[893.81][893.81](APPLAUSE). You bet. So that's the first thing that I just wanted to talk about. We'll talk more about it if anybody wants to as we go forward. There's a second thing that I want to talk about, and that's a bill that we got through the Senate just yesterday. And I'll tell you a little bit about this bill. Forty-eight million Americans have hearing loss. Maybe some of you either have it or know someone who has it? Yeah, it's a lot of folks across this country have hearing loss. I'll say that a little louder.[929.13][929.13](LAUGHTER). A lot of people have hearing loss in America. But here's the thing, fewer than one in six gets a hearing aid. And the principal reason? They cost a lot of money, thousands of dollars, right? And they're not covered by Medicare, they're not covered by Medicaid, and they're not covered by most insurance policies. So that means folks are on their own. I talked to people during the time I've been working on this who talk about saving for years to be able to get a hearing aid. And just for anyone who's never lived with this, what that means is years in isolation, years when, yeah, you can't hear the TV set, but it also means you can't hear your family. You can't hear your neighbors. You can't hear when you go to the grocery store. You're worried about driving that you may not be able to hear. It matters not to have help when you have hearing loss. So the question is, I want you all to think about this for just a minute. When you think about all the electronics, consumer electronics that are out there, and how year after year, they get more complicated, they get more interesting, there's more they can do, better sound, they get smaller, and prices keep going down, except on hearing aids. You ever thought about that? Except on hearing aids. And the question is why? And the principal reason is that there are six hearing aid manufacturers who have managed to stitch up this market and help make a whole set of state laws very complex, so that the only way that people can get hearing aids in America is you've got to go this way, and then you've got to turn, and it varies from state to state. But the consequence is to keep the price very high. So I looked at this and thought, wait a minute, we could do better than this. What we could do is that, talk to the scientists about it, look at the research on this, how about if we sell hearing aids over the counter, the same way you can buy glasses over the counter, same way you can go get your blood pressure checked at the drugstore over the counter? How about if we do the same thing with hearing aids? And here's what I learned. We can't do that because these laws, this tangle of laws is in the way. So I said, that's one thing we ought to be able to fix in Washington. So I proposed that we repeal those laws or override those laws and simply pass a law that says hearing aids can be sold over the counter. That's it. It's that simple, right? Straightforward.[1099.25][1099.25](APPLAUSE). Now, here's where this story gets to be fun. First person I called on this is a Republican from Iowa, Chuck Grassley. And I said, Chuck. And he said, what? And I said, Chuck.[1118.71][1118.71](LAUGHTER). And I told him about the idea. He listened to it for just a couple of minutes, and he said, that's a good idea. I'm in. I will fight for this. And from there, we just kept reaching out. Johnny Isaacson, a Republican from Georgia, he said, I'll take a piece of that. Maggie Hassan from New Hampshire said, I care about this. I saw this as a governor. I'm in. Claire McCaskill from Missouri said, I want to be part of this. Count me in on this. And at the end of the day, we got nearly every Republican and every Democrat on board to pass the law, very straightforward, to roll back all of the state tangle of laws and say, you can buy a hearing aid over the counter. Now, I know, I just love this.[1173.83][1173.83](APPLAUSE). Guess who fought us on it? Yeah, just pause for a minute. You figured that one out. The hearing aid industry, right? And they didn't bother me a whole lot in Massachusetts. They figured I was a hopeless cause.[1190.03][1190.03](LAUGHTER). And they were right. But they went after particularly the Republicans who got on this bill, and they ran ads in their home state about why is a Republican working with Elizabeth Warren? They ran ads about why is, why this new regulatory overreach, because they thought somehow this was going to make the federal government more powerful. Ran a bunch of ads. We beat them back on that, but to me, it reminds me of the core about what's going on in Washington right now. There are a lot of people in Washington who would like to do the right thing. There are a lot of people in Washington who do care about families and say, how can we make something better? Sure, there are things we disagree on, but there are also things we agree on and can come together. But there's always somebody, somebody who's making money off the system the way it is, somebody who hires the lobbyists and the lawyers to get in there and say, no, 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 keep things working for me, keep things working for those at the top, keep things working for my shareholders instead of for the American people. So I'm here to report, it's a hard fight, but every now and again, we win one. And yesterday, we won one on hearing aids. So we got it done. We got it done. I'm happy about this. Yeah. Good.[1287.83][1287.83](APPLAUSE). So those were the two things that I wanted to talk about, just to kind of get us started here, to make sure that we're getting underway. I'll talk about any topic anybody wants to. The way we're going to do this is I've got State Senator Joe Boncorie. Joe, where are you? Come on up, Joe. I've got State Senator Joe Boncorie. And what Joe's going to do is Joe's going to manage, he's going to be our emcee, and he's going to draw numbers. And when he draws, you all got a number when you came in? Except for that one cranky-looking guy over there, they didn't give him a number. They were a little worried. No, I'm just kidding. Everybody got a number if you wanted to ask a question. So Joe's going to draw the numbers and call the numbers out. And if you'll just come, we've got microphones here, there, should be one in each aisle, and there's one, it was hard for me to see. Come on down, ask the questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. Joe?
There's a lot of numbers in here.
Good to see you. Good to see you, Senator.
Thank you.
Are you coming back out here?
Thank you.
So Katherine's back up. If I don't get it right, she'll do the right answers. Sit down, Katherine. Good. Okay.
All right.
That's right. We're ready.
Well, there's plenty of numbers in here, Senator, so.
Okay, plenty of numbers. I'm ready.
So I'm going to call three at a time, three numbers at a time. And when I call your number, please form a line at the microphone. And, you know, keep in mind that there are many people here who want to ask questions, so one question per customer.
That's okay. If he says the number, I'll say the number. I think they're worried about two mics.
We have number 28.
28.
47, and 29.
28, 29, 47. Okay, we got somebody? Somebody's moving this way.
Hello. Is this on? Hi, Senator Warren.
Hi. What's your name?
My name is Emma.
Emma?
Yes.
It's nice to see you, Emma.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to speak with you. I live in Everett, Mass., and I work in Boston.
Go Ever. Okay. We got anybody here from Ever? Good. They're waiting for you here, Emma. Okay.
Thank you. And I believe that, just like health care, that education, including higher education, is a right for all people.
Yes.
And in light of the Trump administration's recent discriminatory rhetoric and actions against affirmative action, LGBTQ people, and rescinding the 2016 Dear Colleague letter, what kind of resources from the state and federal government can students from minority groups and also administrators in higher education rely upon to make sure that our underrepresented students are supported and feel safe on our college campuses? And also, what will you or your colleagues do to make sure that we have affordable housing in Massachusetts so that the students who graduate from our great institutions can stay?
Good. Okay, good. Thank you, Emma. Thanks very much. It's a good question.[1466.83][1466.83](APPLAUSE). You know, if I can, I'm going to broaden your question out just a little bit, Emma, because there's a whole part I want to talk about here, about the importance of access to post-high school education. Many of you know my story. You know that I, my daddy ended up as a janitor, my mom worked a minimum-wage job at Sears. In my whole life, all I ever wanted to do was be a public school teacher. Can we hear it for public school teachers?[1496.33][1496.33](APPLAUSE). Yeah. And by the time I was a senior in high school, that looked like a complete impossibility to my family. We didn't have the money for a college application, much less the money to send me off to school. And like so many personal stories, it's a long, shaggy-dog story about my getting a debate scholarship and then getting married and dropping out of college at 19. Smart. And, but ultimately, getting one last shot, and my one last shot was a commuter college that cost $50 a semester and was open enrollment. And that commuter college opened that one door for me. And that's how I got to be a public school teacher. And once that door was open, it was another door and another door and another door. I believe in the power of open doors from education. It's what makes us an America of opportunity. But I don't kid myself, those doors are not open in the same ways today. Today, there are a lot of kids for whom it's going to be an easy path into college and on into life afterwards. But for a lot more kids, it's a question about how you get in and whether or not you can survive the debt. Today, all across this country, even kids who graduate from state schools, 70% of them have to take on student loan debt in order to make it through. America's student loan debt burden, I just want to remind all of you, is now $1.4 trillion. It has grown by $100 billion in the last year alone. Think about that. People are paying down every day, but they're taking on more debt, and the interest rate is mounting. This hits all young people hard, but it really hits young people hard who come from backgrounds that just don't have money, come from backgrounds where not everybody has gone to school before. So the way I see this is this is like one of those fundamental questions about our values, who we are as a people. Do we really believe in an America that just works for the top 10%, that creates great privilege for them and just leaves everybody else hanging on by their fingernails? Or do we believe in an America where we invest in public education, K through 12 and beyond, an America where every kid, regardless of how you grew up, regardless of your color, regardless of your religion, has an opportunity to get an education and build something for themselves and their family? For me, this is one of the principal reasons that I ended up running for the United States Senate. I am deeply grateful for the opportunities that were given to me, and I am deeply determined that we expand those opportunities to all of our kids. That's what it's about.[1712.83][1712.83](APPLAUSE). So specifically down to Emma's problem, okay, or the issue you raised here, Emma, we got a real problem. And that is, her name is Betsy DeVos. Let's just be blunt.[1727.71][1727.71](LAUGHTER). Secretary of Education who does not believe in public education. And this shows up, K through 12, what the budget looks like, because we're going to head into budget negotiations this fall, but it also shows up in higher ed. And it's showing up in one place after another, where she wants to cut Pell Grants in half, where she wants to turn decades of civil rights work on its head, where she wants to say, education is about for-profit colleges making a profit off the backs of our kids. And this shows up, K through 12, what the budget looks like, because we're going to head into budget negotiations this fall. But it also shows up in higher ed. And it's showing up in one place after another, where she wants to cut Pell Grants in half, where she wants to turn decades of civil rights work on its head, where she wants to say, "Education is about for-profit colleges making a profit off the backs of our kids instead of our kids getting a chance to build something to move forward." So here's, here's what we do. I think of this very much like I do on healthcare. We don't have control, we don't have the votes, but boy, we have oversight. If you haven't yet seen it, I've opened something called, you'll like the name, DeVos Watch. Just Google it. Where we ask questions, we keep up with every ruling that's coming out of the Department of Education, every hire that's coming out of the Department of Education, and we demand some public accountability. It's, it's not a perfect tool, but it's the best tool we've got right now. So what I'm going to ask is that we both be in this one together. What I'm going to do is I'm going to stay after Betsy DeVos. And I'm trying to get as many tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of people to help do that, because I think that's the best shot we've got at keeping the public interest in public education here in America. So, I hope that helps. Thanks, Emma. Okay. What do we got?
Good evening, Senator.
Good evening.
I have a question on foreign.
Tell me your name.
My name is Sam Khatib.
Say it again?
Sam Khatib.
Sam Khatib? Did I say it right? Good.
I have a foreign policy question. It seems like the President has some kind of fear of Russia, and it seems like every decision he makes seems to appease the Russian leadership. The latest one is eliminating support for the Syrian rebels who have been fighting ISIS and Qaeda affiliate in Syria. My question to you is, what, where do you stand on that elimination of support? And what can be done about the Russia-Trump relationship?
Okay. So, the Russia-Trump relationship, let's just start out with the blunt facts. The FBI is now engaged in a full-scale criminal investigation into the relationship between Russia, the Trump campaign, the Trump family, and Donald Trump himself. It is a criminal investigation ongoing, and we received information just in the last 24 hours that they have impaneled a grand jury in order to move that investigation forward. So that's part of it. But your question goes to another part that is also powerfully important about how these pieces intersect. And that's the question that we also have a responsibility for in the United States Congress. We have a responsibility to investigate what Trump has done with Russia and what Trump is doing with Russia in order to protect the national security interests of our country. And that is an ongoing investigation in the House and in the Senate. I would like to see those investigations go out into the public. They've been far too much in secret, in my view. I think the public has a right to know what's going on, because ultimately, it is the responsibility of Congress to protect us and to protect us on these foreign policy decisions. Catherine, do you want to say a word about what's happening in the House on the investigation?
Oh, boy.
Yeah. If you don't want to, it's okay, I didn't mean to cold-call here.
That's fine. You know, I think we're really at this point putting all our trust and hope in the Mueller investigation, because the House, you've seen our chairman run into trouble, have to resign, and the House is really just stalled out on their investigation. But we have some great leadership in Adam Schiff and the Democratic Caucus.
Yeah, he's really good.
Is continuing to push, and we are going to demand answers for this. And I think it has been, it's unusual that you see so many members of the Intelligence Committee on the talk shows, on the Sunday shows, Adam Schiff is on constantly. But that's how important it is to make sure that our President understands that this wasn't a threat to the Democrats or to the Republicans, and it's a threat to our democracy. And that we all need to be invested in getting to the bottom of that and making sure that we protect our open and free elections. And until the White House understands that, we're going to keep pushing the Republican leadership in the House to make sure that they hear us loud and clear.
And I want to add just one kind of P.S., because you'd asked specifically about Syria. But it's coming up everywhere. It's in Syria, it's Ukraine, it's, it's throughout Europe right now. It's this fundamental question, this is the problem we've got, because of the ongoing investigation into Donald Trump's activities, his connections with Russia, and his behavior. Let's face it, it's about things he has said and done since he has been President. That, that the American people have lost confidence that the President of the United States will be out there first, last, and in-between, looking out for the interests of the United States and not just looking out for his own personal interests. And that's the cost of what's going on right now. As Catherine says, we need to get to the bottom of this, but understand, every day that goes by, we are paying a price in America for Donald Trump's reckless and irresponsible behavior with the Russians. And that needs to come to an end, and it needs to happen quickly. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Senator Warren.
Hi.
Thank you for holding this town hall, or coming to this town hall.
Oh, you bet. This is fun.
Thank you for ever helping.
This is number 10, right?
Oh, so fun.
Double digits now. This is fun.
And thank you for taking.
So tell me your name.
Oh, my name is William. I live in Jamaica, Jamaica Plain.
Hi, William. Good to see you.
So thank you for taking my question.
Sure.
In 2012, I voted for you because I recognized you to be someone who's not afraid to take bold stands on progressive issues. And in many respects, you've proven to be exactly that, which is why today, I want to see if you are willing to commit to opposing the anti-Israel boycott, the anti-boycott, the Israel Anti-Boycott Act S-720.
Okay. Did you say it the right way?
Yeah, yeah. So I want to see if you will commit to opposing the Israel Anti-Boycott Act S-720. The Israel Anti-Boycott Act constitutes a dangerous affront to our ability as citizens to engage in and support peaceful economic boycott efforts, which is a constitutionally protected right. According to the ACLU, under this act, even merely ceasing to do business with or in one of the illegal settlements Israel has constructed on Palestinian land could lead U.S. citizens subject to a maximum 20-year jail sentence or $1 million penalty. Senator Warren, will you stand with us and commit to opposing the Israel Anti-Boycott Act?
So let me say two things in response. The first one is I do not support, let me see if I can say this right. I do not support the boycott. I think the boycott is wrong. But I think outlawing protected free speech activity violates our basic constitutional norms.
We agree on the second point.
So I'm free speech.
We agree on the second point.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to do one as well? Are you good? You feel the same? Good. We got two of us. You got two of us here. You got a twofer on that one. Nice.
All right, we'll hear from our next group now. We'll have number 30, number 84, and number 289. And as they approach, I want to recognize some of our elected officials who joined us tonight. We have former state rep Kathy Ann Reinstein. Thank you for being here.
Kathy Ann, stand up. Stand up.
We have our delightful host, Superintendent of Schools Diane Kelly. Thank you for hosting us tonight.
Stand up, Diane.
We have Revere School Committee Woman, toughest job in politics, Senator.
That's right.
That's Carol Ty. District Councilor in Revere, Joanne McKenna. District Councilor from Winthrop, Peter Christopher. School Committee Man from Winthrop, Tino Capabianco. And we're going to do three at once. We have three city councils from the city of Revere, Pat Keefe, Jessica Genino, and Steve Morabito. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you guys for being here. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name's Martin Monahan.
Mark?
Martin.
Martin.
Yeah, Marty's fine also.
Marty, okay.
All right. My question is with regards to healthcare.
Uh-huh.
And it's pretty simple. The problem or the root cause of the exuberant prices must be the pharmaceutical and healthcare industry themselves. I don't hear a whole lot of talk about investigating why the prices are so high, that premiums are up there, that we have to have all this back and forth about something that should be a basic right for human healthcare. Is there any investigations going on?
Okay, so can I just start by saying Marty is not a plant? Okay? I did not ask Marty to ask this question, but boy, do I care about this question, Marty. So let's start with one thing we could do, okay? A week ago, we beat back the repeal of the Affordable Care. Let's do one more round of that, because it's so good. And that feels great. And it took a lot of people to make that happen, but that is not enough. That doesn't fix healthcare in America. We know where it is we want to aim. We want to make sure that we get better outcomes at lower prices. That's what we're looking for overall. And the price of healthcare keeps going up and up and up. So what kind of things could we do right now just to make healthcare in America more affordable, make it work? And the first place we could start is on prescription drugs. We could start on prescription drugs, and look, there are three, four ways we could do it right now. I've got a bill with Bernie Sanders that says, let's just import them from Canada. They use the same safety standards we do. And here's the amazing thing. Do you realize on many basic prescription medications that we are paying 10 times as much in the United States as people are paying in Canada? We're just getting ripped off. And we could put a stop to that. We could just have that bill go through and make it work. So that's one option. A second one is I've got a bill with Senator Al Franken that has a whole menu of ways. We could go about lowering the price on prescription drugs. And for example, one of them is, how about if we start having Medicare negotiate prices for drugs, instead of just letting the drug companies name whatever number they want? There's been a little bit of investigation. We've had some hearings, I've been part of those hearings. For example, you remember the business about the EpiPen, how the price jerked up, right? You remember Martin Shereky?
Oh, I'm a criminal.
Who, by the way, was just convicted of criminal fraud. But going to Marty's point, not because of what he did on drug pricing, because of insider trading and activities, I think you're exactly right. We've got to be willing, as a country, to say, we're not going to get ripped off by these big drug companies anymore. It's driving up costs for families, and it's driving up the cost of insurance. So the two just keep looping out of control. I think it's a good place to start, one that we understand, understand what we could do. So I'm with you on this one, Marty. How about if we start on prescription drugs and go from there? You good on that? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Marty. You want to add anything, Catherine?
Good evening, Senator Warren. My name is Michael McCastro, and I'm a New York resident.
Martin.
Michael.
Michael.
Mike, you can call me Mike.
Mike, okay, Mike.
And I met you several years ago, actually, on the campaign trail and at the dedication of the East Boston Branch Library.
Oh, I remember. I remember the dedication.
While I approached you and I asked if I could have my picture taken with the next Senator from Massachusetts. And you said, your response was, "From your mouth to God's ears." So I guess he was listening.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
My question is actually about some good news that we received today about the economy.
Uh-huh.
Unemployment down to 4.1%.
Yeah.
Over 200,000 jobs added, and certainly, the stock market at record highs, GDP at 2.6% and rising. What will you do to work with the other party, along with President Trump, regardless of how you might feel about him, to keep that going, to keep our economy strong, and to keep people employed?
Okay, so it's a, it's a really good question, but I'm gonna, I want to approach this a little different way. I made it clear. Look, if we can do something that's going to help working families, I'm all in. That's what the hearing aid bill was about, right? I didn't stand on ceremony and say, hey, it's only Democrats we care about, we'll take a win. No, it's what works for working families. Americans, absolutely. All right. Here's my problem with the great numbers today. And they are great numbers, and I'm happy about those numbers. I'm happy to see the stock market up, I'm happy to see the unemployment rate down. But it doesn't reflect the lived experience of much of America. You know, there was a time in America that if the stock market went up, it meant that those corporations were going to give raises to all of their employees. But that hasn't been true for decades now. There was a time when, when unemployment went down, it meant that everybody had full-time jobs, 40-hour-week jobs, jobs with benefits, but not so much anymore. What worries me about America is that the wealth, it's not just the wealth, it's all the opportunity keeps moving to the top. So if you'll let me for just a minute, I want to talk just for a second about facts, because I think facts are important. I, I do. And, and, and these are going to be real facts. I left a long time never thinking you were going to have to have a modifier for facts, like, you know, ours are going to be the facty facts as opposed to the alternative facts. So anyway, but here's what I want to talk about, and I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. Okay, it starts in 1790s. I know. America is a bu—people get up and they say, oh, that's the end. America was a boom and bust economy from the late 1700s. About every 20 years, what would happen is the economy would get better, it would get better, it would get better, it would get great, and then it would explode. And when it exploded, it took down the speculators, but it also took down the small business owners, and it took down employees, and it took down farmers. It took down people all across the country. So when the big one hit in 1930, Franklin Roosevelt said, "We can do better." He said, "We can do better." And here's what he did. He said, "We've got two tools to work with." The first tool, cover the children's ears, the first tool is regulation. We're going to enforce antitrust laws, we're going to make sure that big banks can't blow up the economy, we're going to put a cop on the beat on Wall Street, that was the SEC, FDIC insurance, we're going to make it safe to put money in banks, right? Glass-Steagall, we're going to separate checking account and savings account banking from high-risk investment banking. We're going to do all those things just to level the playing field, so little businesses, so individuals don't get wiped out. The second thing is progressive taxation. And we're going to take some of that money from progressive taxation, and we're going to reinvest it in education, in infrastructure, in basic research, in education. And we did this over about a 40-year period. A GI bill, a grateful nation said to its people, K through 12 education, NDEA loans. We're going to invest in education because we believe if our kids can get an education, their opportunities will expand. We're going to invest in infrastructure, in roads and bridges and power. I want you to think about this one. In the 1930s, 90% of the cities had power, had electricity. Only 10% of rural areas had power. And what did Franklin Roosevelt say? He said, "We're going to have power all across America, because you can't be part of a 20th century economy unless you've got electricity. Nobody's going to build a business where you are unless you have electricity." So we're going to bring all of America into these opportunities. And those were investments, whether you lived in the city or you lived in the country, you invested. Everybody invested their tax money in it. And the third part, amazing, we invested in research, in a giant pipeline of ideas, in scientific research, in medical research, in engineering research, in behavioral research, because we said, when you invest in ideas, we can build a future that we haven't even dreamed of. We made those investments, and from 1935 to 1980, GDP in America just keeps going up. It just keeps going up, and here's the best part of that story. The 90% of America, everybody not in the top 10%, the 90% of America, they got 70% of all that new income growth that was going on. In other words, the pie got bigger and everybody got more to eat. And don't kid yourself, when I say everybody— And don't kid yourself, when I say everybody, I mean everybody. Upper-middle class, middle class, working class, working poor, poor, poor. Everybody did better. That's how it worked. That's what we did as a country. And then, 1980, Ronald Reagan, trickle-down economics. And what were the two key features of trickle-down economics? First one, deregulate. Turn them loose, let the big banks do what they want to do. What could possibly go wrong? Right? Cut back on antitrust enforcement, let them go. And the second part, cut taxes for those at the top. And once you cut taxes for those at the top, there's less and less money to spend in education, in infrastructure, and in basic research. And we cut back on all of those as a proportion of our GDP. Now, here's the part of the story that you really want to get focused on. So what happened? And the answer is, GDP just kept going right on up? Kept on going up. First time period it goes up, second time period goes up. 1980 to 2016, now it went down during the crash, but it came back, just keeps going up, but here's the difference. Here's the difference. From 1980 to 2016, how much of that growth in income did the 90% get? And the answer, zero. 100% of the growth in income in this economy since 1980 has gone to the top 10%. There has been nothing left over for the 90% of America. And so every time I see the numbers, yes, I celebrate, I am glad to see GDP go up. But the question is, if we are not willing to make those investments again in opportunity, if we're not willing to create chances, not just for some of our children, but for all of our children, then we are going to be a fundamentally different America. So, I get your point, Mike. And yeah, I'll be out there doing what we can to keep this economy going, but at the end of the day, it's really got to be about our willingness to make investments in the future, our willingness to say to the biggest financial institutions in this country, "No, you don't get to run the whole economy." Our willingness to stand up to the lobbyists and to the giant corporations that keep consolidating, and running over small businesses, and running over innovators, and running over their employees, until we take Washington back, until we make Washington work for the people again, we cannot be the America of our dreams. I believe in America, I believe in opportunity, but it's going to take taking back our government to make that happen. So thank you, I hope that's a good answer. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. You lost me for about 20 minutes there. GDP under Obama never went above 3%. It's on its way up over there now.
We have a slow—
And we had a great month, these numbers are awesome.
And I'm delighted.
And I hope they continue.
I do too. I do too. I do too. Thank you. Okay, who forgot next?
Over to the right. Don't stay over the right, come back to the left when this question's over.
Hi, Senator Warren. Thank you for holding this. I'm a big fan, and I have—
Oh, you've got your "Nevertheless, She persisted" t-shirt on. All right. Yay! Tell me your name.
My name's Jordan.
Jordan? Nice to see you.
I live in Somerville, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Jordan.
I and other patients like me really need your help. I have a rare genetic disorder called Ehlers-Danlos syndrome, which among other things causes severe chronic pain. I'm having trouble obtaining my pain medication due to reactionary legislation and guidelines in response to the opioid crisis. And so are many other chronic pain patients. Because of the laws and public pressure, many doctors have decided to just not prescribe opioids at all, due to fear or just not wanting to deal with the hassle. For instance, Mass General's pain clinic won't prescribe them unless you have cancer. Although they're legal, in practice opioids have basically become illegal. I can't adequately explain what it's like to be in so much pain and to have the one thing that helps me be threatened. Chronic pain patients desperately need protection and access to proper treatment. If there's anything you can do to help, I would greatly appreciate it.
So, Jordan, thank you. Thank you for telling your story. Telling your story is probably one of the most powerful things you can do now. And I'm sorry, where you're caught in these big winds that are shifting. You know the problem we've had around opioids, and how many people in this audience have been touched by the opioid crisis. That the companies that were marketing them originally marketed them as non-addictive, pushed them out to doctors, and just quite bluntly, the guidelines were put in the wrong place, and there were way too many pills put out in circulation. The best estimates are that more than 80% of people who have an opiate addiction now started with pills that were legally prescribed to someone, whether it's to themselves or to someone in their family, and they just prescribed way too many. The problem, of course, is trying to get the dials right, and making sure that people who have, as they dial back on the number of prescriptions, that people who have chronic pain are not left behind and left in pain. Now, one part we can do is try to put you in touch with some of the public health people, and I hope you'll just stay afterwards, so somebody from my staff can talk to you about this, and maybe we can try to help on it. But if you'll permit me, I want to add one more part to this, and that's the part about the importance of research. You know, research matters, and research into pain and how to treat pain matters. How to treat pain in ways that are non-addictive, this is one of the things we should be exploring now for everyone. How to treat chronic pain, and whether treating chronic pain is different from treating acute pain, and ways we might do that. But we can't do that if we don't make the investments in research. And I'm going to say one more, this time I'm going to say something very optimistic about it. Last, earlier last, earlier this year, God, it feels like it's been years. But February, is that when we got the budget? From the Trump administration, they sent over their first round of a budget. And one of the things they proposed to do was to cut $1.2 billion of research out of this year's NIH budget. I want you to think about that. These are research grants that are already out there. I can't even think how you could squeeze $1.2 billion out of an ongoing budget. I mean, like, do you fire the mice? You know? I don't even know what you'd do under those circumstances. But when I saw this, and I saw, again, you know, the Republicans have the votes, we're the minority party, I saw this, and I just reached a point, I was just furious over this. I said, "It's short-sighted, and it is stupid." And I started talking to my colleagues, and I ultimately, over in the Senate side, rounded up 17 of my Democratic colleagues, and we sent a letter that basically said, "We're going to vote as a block. If you try to cut NIH in this budget, count us out." And at the end of the day, I won't describe all of the punches that went into this, the budget that ultimately went through, we got a $2 billion increase in NIH funding for this year. You know? It's the reminder, we don't win them all, but by golly, we ought to be out there fighting for the important ones. It makes a difference when you get in there and fight. So thank you, Jordan. Talk to us afterwards, okay? Thanks. Okay, we got somebody else?
Yes, we're going to do three more questions, these are going to be the final three questions.
Okay, make them good.
We're going to have number 98, number 5, and number—
Jump in.
Oh, 51.
Okay.
51 votes.
While we're waiting for our next questions to come up, I want to go back, is it Jordan?
Yes, this is Jordan over here.
Just for a moment, because I think here in Revere, we know how hard the opioid crisis has hit.
Yep.
I've met with the families across the Commonwealth, and certainly right here in this city, who've been devastated. And it's two sides of the same coin, because when we had some very bad actors putting out pain medication that you need, and other people who are suffering from really chronic debilitating pain need, and it was marketed fraudulently as something that could be used and prescribed for just daily aches and pains, and really helped create, very purposely, this crisis. And we know where the beginnings were. It was in prescription drugs. And now we have two horrible things happening. We have families who are devastated by this. Almost 91 families in America, every day, lose a loved one to this crisis. And we have patients like you, who are finding that the backswing and the stigma is also landing on you. And it all has the roots in the same greedy, fraudulent marketing that started this. But we have to keep track of both pieces as we go forward, and strike that balance. And your story is important, and we are hearing it more and more as we go forward. And we're working on provider education, and making sure that doctors understand the many ways to treat pain, and how to use these safely and effectively. And we are proud to partner with you on that as well. So thank you for bringing up that important piece of this epidemic.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, let's start on the left.
My name is Conrad, I'm from Everett.
Hi, Conrad.
Hi, how are you, Liz?
I'm doing well.
Seems to be a perplexing problem of where the funds are going to come from to support people's medical needs. These are cigars, I don't smoke them, but I do chew them. $5 a pack, I go to Montreal, give me four packs. Do you know that those cost $20 a pack? What? Why? That's how we pay for our medical care here in Canada, and everyone is insured. I'll have a cocktail, $8? No, $16. There's a provincial tax and a federal tax. When you hear that, you don't mind paying $20 for a pack of cigars, because you know everyone's medical needs are covered.
Yeah.
Can't we do the same?
That's a very nice point, Conrad. Can I just say thank you? You know, so people ask me, my colleagues back in Washington ask me, "Why do you like to do town halls?" And that's actually one of the principal reasons I like to do town halls, is you hear other ideas, and people who are in here are swinging on it. So thank you, I really appreciate it, Conrad. Thank you. Thank you. What do we got?
Hi, my name is Mike, I'm from Walton.
Mike? Good to see you, Mike.
When the Affordable Care Act came out, I was in college out in Youngstown State, and we decided to tear it apart in history class for the whole summer.
Uh-huh.
So we worked on it, and we came up with a way to give every American healthcare, and make it deficit-neutral.
Uh-huh.
And I wrote it up, and I gave your aide a thumb grab with it.
Fantastic!
Do you support single-payer, which is what we came up with? Because I stole some of your ideas.
Oh, good!
And some of Bernie Sanders', and an idea from Al Gore.
So good, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Please, if you look at it.
Okay, and I will, and I will. Let me just do the quick summary on this. This is how I've seen this. Our first job was to protect the Affordable Care Act, because that was what was under threat. So job number one was to make sure they did not roll back healthcare coverage for millions of Americans and leave nothing in its place. And by the way, create some tax cuts to do that. Job number two is, let's do the places where we could make it better quickly, like negotiating on drug prices. And job number three is, we've really got to move to how everybody gets covered at a low cost. And for me, I think that's going to be Medicare for All. We like Medicare and like how it works. We'll get there. Good to see you, thank you. Thank you very much, I promise I'll read.
Hi there, my name is Cheryl, and I want to thank you—
Hi, Cheryl.
—for this opportunity. I'm from Everett, also, as well as a lot of people here. And so there are a myriad of concerns, many have been touched upon already, such as health issues, public education and literacy, the assault on immigration, and global warming. But my concern, also aligned with, you know, the others, is the breakdown of unions today.
I'm sorry, the breakdown—
The breakdown of unions.
Yes.
I have a concern for that. I'm retired now, but I was a very strong member of SEIU 509. And I just have a concern over this, because I think so many other things, you know, would well, not fall into place, but it impacts every part of us, so.
So, can I just tell a little bit more of the story I was telling earlier about what happened in America? Union membership had started growing into the 1920s, and when the Great Depression hit, no surprise, everybody's out of work, right? Millions of people are out of work, and so union membership, which had started to decline, starts to drop really straw, really heavily. And many people predicted that would be the end of unions. When you've got one in four working-age Americans out of work, who's going to join a union, right? And who's going to go on strike? And the answer was that we passed a series of laws in the United States to support and advance unions. Franklin Roosevelt stood up and said, "If I were a working man, I would join a union." And the amazing thing is that during the 1930s, union membership went way up. And here's what happened over time. As union membership grew, strength in America's middle class grew. Wages went up, working conditions went up, and it wasn't just for union members. The remarkable thing about the union movement was not only what it did for union members, it's what it did for all Americans. I saw a great bumper sticker the other day, and it said, "The weekend, brought to you by a union." In the 19, late 1970s and into the 1980s, when it was an all-out effort to deregulate, to let the biggest corporations and the biggest financial institutions get out there and do what they wanted, to cut taxes for those at the top, the third leg on the stool was to attack unions. And to make it harder, make it harder for unions to form, to make it harder for unions to engage in collective bargaining. The way I see this one, and as union membership has gone down, the share of America's middle class in all that economic growth has also gone down. So the way I see this is, unions help build America's middle class, and unions will help rebuild America's middle class. We all have an interest in strong unions, all of us, all of us. So thank you, Cheryl. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And are we at our last question? Is that right? Is that right? Okay.
That'll be all.
Hi.
One more, two more, two more questions. Okay.
Hi, Senator Warren.
Hi.
This is Caroline. Probably you remember me from all the troubles that I caused you and everyone else. Once I told your husband that I am his twin sister, and he said, "What?" And he looked at me, I am in Spanish half, half French, and I am not blonde and tall, and I am no senator. However, I am a licensed medical social worker, and I am—
Cool.
I am here because I want just to ask you, and I want to talk to you about seniors.
Yes.
What happened with the seniors in America that is very sad. I have so many issues that I can speak to at this moment, but I would like to mark, to ask this question, and everyone else to ask a question too. Our immigration is a sad disaster. It's a complete sad disaster. There is no reason that a great country, seniors have to buy cat food because they cannot pay their medication.
That's right.
That is not fair at all. And something else I would like to ask you, and that is a little bit personal. I would like to know if you, in the future, will be thinking about— will be thinking about being our president.
Come on. So let me start with a question just about aging. And I will try to do this quickly, but I think it's really powerfully important. This is about our values. This is about what kind of a people we are. I believe that after a lifetime of hard work, people are entitled to retire with dignity. That's it. That means we need to protect and expand Social Security. We need to protect and expand Medicare. We need more senior housing. This is who we are as a people. And it's just absolutely critical. And let me take your last question. No, no. Let me, I actually really want to, I want to answer this seriously. We've got some really serious fights in front of us right now. I mean, we've barely, barely made it through this fight on healthcare. And look, it could come back at any moment. Mitch McConnell has the power to bring that bill right back to the floor if he thinks he can get the votes. And we're about to do tax reform. Anyone want to guess where that one is headed? We're about to do a budget. There's a question of the debt ceiling and whether or not... Catherine and I are standing backstage asking, "Are they going to shut down the government in September?" And these are just the ones packed right here. Education, we were just talking about earlier. The education budget, just K through 12, just one little part of the education budget. You know what it calls for? It says, "Let's make sure that no federal government dollars, no tax dollars of yours go to helping children learn a foreign language." Yeah. Huh? None go to gym classes. None go to art. None go to AP classes. God forbid that our kids should take some AP classes. And just in case anybody missed where they were aiming, and not a single federal dollar could go to the Special Olympics. This is the kind, yeah, what? And we haven't even been able to start talking about that stuff because there's been so much other stuff between Russia, between healthcare, that we have had to talk about. So I'm really serious when I say we can't get engaged in this game of every four years. And that's what we're going to pay attention. And that's all we're going to keep looking at. What happens four years? What happens four years? I know it's important. But right now, we've got fights in front of us and we need to be on the front lines on those fights. That's where my attention is. Doing my job every day. Doing my job every day. So thank you. I appreciate it. But doing my job. Thank you.
We love you and we support you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I want to thank all of you for being here. Go Revere! Yes! Anybody who wants to come and take a picture, come up this way. And we'll just take pictures and say hello. Thank you, Catherine.
So the senator's kind enough to stick around.
Hi, I'm doing just great. It is good to be here in Revere. On a nice summer evening, and all these people want to come in and talk about what's happening in Washington.
All right. You knew we would do this, but I want to make sure I understand you when you were answering the question about the possible White House run.
Yes.
Put it into words again.
No.
Because?
Because we're focused right now and need to be focused on the fights that are in front of us. We barely escaped having healthcare rolled back for 25 million Americans. We've got a budget battle coming up. We've got a possible shutdown of the government coming up in September. We have an immigration crisis on our hands. We've got a Russia investigation. We can't just play this game of once every four years and getting focused there. We need to focus on the fights in front of us. I'm doing my job every single day. I am not running for president. I'm doing my work.
That's final, right up until...
I am not running for president. I'm doing my work.
There were some protesters outside supporting Mr. Deal. And they basically said, "You're not a full-time senator. You're running around, running for national office," and that sort of thing. Just your response to...
Yeah, I'm here on my 10th town hall over the last couple of months and just working my heart out for the people of Massachusetts. We're just back from Washington where we rolled back a Republican attempt to take away healthcare for 25 million Americans. And just yesterday, I got my bill passed so that there are going to be over-the-counter hearing aid sales. And that's potentially can help about 48 million people have hearing loss. Many of whom came in for thousands of dollars for hearing aid. That's doing my work every single day.
Senator Warren, there's a conversation mostly about whether abortion should be some sort of limitless task for getting DNC votes. It seems like not a limitless task. Do you feel like the Democratic Party's time is big enough for people who have different views on abortion rights?
I am strongly pro-choice. I have been pretty much forever. And I will fight hard on the pro-choice side. But I recognize that not everybody in my party agrees with me. I can live with that.
How far do you expect Mr. Mueller's investigation to go?
I don't know. It's a criminal investigation. Now he has impaneled a grand jury. That means it's serious and it's contained on the ballot.
What would happen if he fired, like, the president?
You mean if the president fired him? I think that would be a national crisis.